All right, looks like it's recording. So, welcome to the East Hampton City Council Ordinance Committee meeting of April 9th, 2020. I see that all three of us are here. I don't see Owen right now, but I know he's here.
Yeah, I'm here, I'm just taking notes.
Okay, and I don't think we have any minutes, is that correct?
No, I said minutes.
You did?
Yeah, I did.
I missed them.
That's okay.
Can we do them next time?
Hey Ben, you're the chair. Yeah.
We'll do them next time.
Yeah.
Okay, so, public speak time. Is anybody here from the public that would like to say anything? And I think we have, let's see, we have Becca in here, and we might have somebody else, let's see. And if you do, just go ahead and unmute your microphone, and let us know if you want to speak.
We're here to say hello, and it's good to be with everybody tonight.
Thanks for coming in virtually with us.
All right.
Hi.
Was that Becca and Lee?
Yeah.
All right, just typing it down.
Yeah. So we have a couple of things on our agenda tonight. So we have the plastic bag ordinance, which we have the revised, revised one that Owen sent out, which I have right here. And so, and you can also see that Planner Bag is here as well, because he has some, an issue around cannabis zoning that we have, you noticed that we left the continued review of adult-use cannabis on there for things like this, when an issue comes up and we need to take a look at it. So he's gonna let us know about that, but do you guys want to just jump into the plastic bag ordinance, which is a little ironic right now, since it's illegal to use reusable bags in the state right now, or highly discouraged, I guess? A little bit of a setback, but what do you, Owen, do you want to just highlight the things that you changed on here?
Yes, I should look at the old version. Let me just pull that up, so I can speak to that one second, sorry.
And can everybody, everybody see? Yeah, Dan?
I just want to ask Owen, the one you sent me today, is that the revised one?
Correct.
Owen's revised.
I just have a few questions, once you go through them, and then I'll leave the meeting, because I think you guys are doing a remarkable job here.
Thank you. Let me find this.
And if you, if you have a section, I can, can you guys all see the document I have up on here?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
I just had to find the last version, I'm sorry, guys, I mean, the prior version, because I just erased all the
Oh, the changes?
Let's see.
Well, I guess in the meantime, we can check in, how's everybody doing? Everybody staying safe and healthy?
Yeah, yeah, for the most part.
Tom, I think you should paint something behind you.
Yeah. I think on the wall. Weekend, I think I'm gonna paint this whole room, because it's kind of ominous looking.
I like it, I like it. I think it would be cool if you sat down and you had Viking horns.
Yeah, something like that.
Devil horns.
Yeah. So.
Did, while I'm looking for this, did you guys by a chance see that letter I sent you from the Connecticut River Conservatory?
Well, let's take a look, let's see if we can find that. I think we see it right now.
Hey Salem, just a question.
Yeah.
How are you doing this? Do you have them all on your computer, and you just click on them to bring them up?
So, can you see my tablet right here?
Also, it's
What I'm doing is, I'm sharing my, so I allowed sharing, so we can, I allowed people to share things, and then I just logged on with the meeting ID and shared my screen.
Yeah, Dan, if you look at the bottom, there's a little option on the ribbon that moves when you move your cursor.
The screen, but it lets me call up, I guess if I call up, like, the budget, I'm gonna be able to scroll through it, right?
Yes, yeah. And so, that's what I do with my classes, you know, I'll go through my, like, presentation, and I'll be like this, and so they can see my screen and hear me.
Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt, Owen.
No, I'm still looking for this last version, I'm sorry, apologize.
Well, we do have the letter up on here.
Yep.
So, so that's one of the things, I mean, Owen, if you want, we could, we could move on to the cannabis thing.
Can I just ask my questions on this?
Dan, can I, yeah, yeah, I think that'd be fine, Dan.
I went through the whole thing, and I think it's pretty good. My questions you probably already approached, because you've already talked about this. Under compostable plastic bags, where you define it, who is going to see, I assume the Health Department will verify that the bag that some business is using is quote-unquote compostable? And do they need to be approved by the Health Department? I think that should be in there.
Well, they'll meet certain standards.
Okay, but who decides that what they get is the right standard?
The Health Department, right? Is that correct, Salem?
You have forceful throughout the Health Department, so.
This one.
My concern is that that has to be pre-approved, and you might want to write language for that, that's just a thought. I have a problem with, I like that we're using disposable plastic straws, I mean, compostable straws, but you have a line, unless requested by the consumer, I ask, why did you put that in? Why do we need to allow plastic straws, just because a consumer asked for it?
Well, I think I can take a stab at that, I think there are some people that have disabilities that require a straw to be able to drink, and I think that's one of the reasons why we decided to have
A paper straw would be, a paper straw would not allow for that? Or whatever, a disposable?
There's not good enough technology at this time in regards to the necessities for people with disabilities who need straws to consume fluids, to really have a really viable method with the kinds of straws that are out there that aren't plastic. That's why outright straw bans aren't widespread in the country, just because of that issue. I don't, I don't know if anyone else wants to comment on that.
I see the point, I think it's a good one, maybe you could write a little note about that in here, so that people like me don't ask why. It's a good, it's a good reason, is what I'm saying.
Right. Yeah.
The other thing is, when we get to 4-1 exemptions, why can't the uncooked raw meat poultry raw fish be in a compostable plastic bag? Why does it have to be allowed to be the other type of bags?
So flexible transparent covering is basically fancy ordinance jargon for plastic wrap.
Right.
And there's no, again, that's generally excluded from these kinds of ordinances. They certainly could be in some sort of compostable wrapping, but generally, these kinds of ordinances will continue to allow plastic wrap type of materials.
Well, I noticed that Big Y, or Southampton, has the ordinance, they use these green bags for produce and for meat. And I don't know why they, if we're gonna allow that, why can't they be the compostable green bag? I think it's a, it's a necessary thing, that's just a thought, I don't know if that they're available, but I thought that would be a good thing to do. I don't like little holes in exemptions, if we're gonna do it, let's do it. And I really mean that, I think last thing is, I think the penalties are way too low. If a business, they get one year, well, it's not the last thing, I'm sorry, fifty dollars is just pretty low to me, I think it should be triple that. I don't know, I just think that you give them a warning, and then within the year, they get their first offense. So, I just think they're too low, and I think you should debate that some more. I'm wondering, do you feel that there are people that really oppose this, that would be worried about the penalties? I'm just curious why you set them so low.
Those were, those were pretty boilerplate from some of the other places I looked at. I don't disagree with you that potentially, maybe the first offense should be low, but, you know, a third or second should be much higher.
I would go with that, that's good.
But I'd leave that up to the rest of this committee to weigh in.
I mean, I think it's something we can discuss, definitely.
And the last thing is, because of the COVID situation, which means businesses are hurting, let's not put this into effect until eighteen months instead of one year, that's a thought, because I don't know how long it'll take for this ordinance to reach, to reach the council after a lawyer review and all that, but eighteen months is only six months more. These businesses are gonna have to recover. Even the ones that are open, I was at Manchester's today, and there was hardly anybody in the store. So, I'm just saying, I think you should consider adding more time. That's all. Thanks for listening.
Thanks for input, Dan.
Thanks, Dan.
All right, I'll let you guys go. It's nice to hear from all of you.
Yeah, good to see you.
Good to see you.
All right. Take care, I'll see you next week at the council meeting.
See you then.
Chairman Derby, I think I could take, I think I accidentally deleted the one with the markups, but I can take a stab at the changes I made.
Oh yeah, that's, that's no problem, and I'm just wondering, Jeff, I want to be respectful of your time. Do you, do you want, I mean, Owen, Tom, do you guys have an issue with us maybe putting this on a quick hold, so Jeff can talk about the thing that he wants to bring up?
No, that's fine.
Okay, so let's, let's put the plastic bag on a quick hold, Jeff, thanks for joining in.
Yeah, thanks for having me, thanks for having me.
No problem, I'm gonna pull up, I'm gonna see if I can find your letter, really quick. And I'll pull it up, do you want me to put that up on here, well, as you, as you speak?
Yes, please, that'd be great.
Yeah. And let's see, if this, did it come up? I wonder if I have like multiple open on here, there it is.
Yeah. Okay, thank you for moving this up, that's great, I appreciate that a lot. So, you know, as this, this is just some notes to get a conversation started, but as you can read, it's in addition to the amendment that Counselor Kuzinski has presented to this group. There is another change that is related to the highway business that I would like to ask the ordinance subcommittee to consider, including with, with the amendment that Counselor Kuzinski has. So, you know, right now, you know, actually, if we take one step back, when we were creating the zoning two years ago, you know, it was actually pretty, pretty close to exactly two years ago, that there was lots of discussions happening about getting a zoning ordinance in place, so that the city was not only protected at certain levels, also had regulations that could allow businesses to start potentially locating in East Hampton, so there was a lot going on at that time. And, and a couple of places in the zoning, you know, we, I think there was discussions about questions or concerns that were, you know, maybe not able to be resolved at that point in time, so a couple of areas included safeguards, so to speak, so we, instead of delaying the full adoption of zoning, we put together some language that was more conservative. And related to the highway business, what we see right now is that, under the text here, option one, there is lined out the highway business, but otherwise, it's the current text. And what it actually says is that, in the highway business and the downtown business, that anything other than retail has to be done, has to be located within an existing building. And so that was, there were some discussions at that time about, you know, unknowns as to how cultivation facilities in particular were gonna roll out throughout the state. And I know personally, going back and watching some of the videos, what was happening was in the town of Charlton, they were in the process of dealing with a million-square-foot cultivation facility, and their zoning had not properly dealt with that, so they didn't really have any, you know, regulations related to cultivation facilities, especially something that large. So, through a lot of discussions, the, the language that got put together was that, you know, if it was in an existing building, at least the buildings would be there, and it would be more, it would be more in line with the character of what we had in the highway business, so that's basically Route 10. So, so what we're looking at is, we've, obviously, we've got a proposal, we've got a, I shouldn't say proposal, we've got a company who has a concept for a property on Route 10 that requires new buildings. And so, we want to make sure that they have an opportunity to continue to pursue a project in East Hampton, and right now, the way the zoning is set up is that they, it's a problem, it prohibits the construction of new buildings for cultivation. So there's a couple of options I kind of quickly laid out for discussion. Option one really would just remove the highway business from, from that section that would allow a new, a new facility to get built. You know, and we had a lot of discussions at that time about the, about the downtown business, you know, has a really important character for us, and there's not a lot of vacant parcels, so there was some discussion downtown. Option two would be just removing the entire section, and just allowing for these uses to evolve without any additional regulations. And then option three, you know, really would just be something where there would be some potential design standards that might be considered for projects that move forward. You know, and the idea would be that, you know, the way it's written, and this is subject to further discussion and possible additional amendments, but the idea is that, you know, we, in the meetings early on, we talked about companies that would erect, you know, large metal prefabricated buildings, like a Morton Building, and if they decided to put them right up as close as they could to the street, it might really not fit the character, so you know, one idea of a design characteristic would be that it would be setback from the street at some level. And then, you know, the other just item here is that maybe it's not the sole use of the property, so our highway business is really intended to be, you know, generating business for people, the members of the public, to, to, to do business activities and get goods and services, so just the idea that maybe it's not the sole use of properties on Route 10. So, I don't know if, you know, maybe this is a good time to break on some questions or anything that could be clear, more clearly articulated on my end. I just, I appreciate this, I think it's the right time to consider it, given that there is a current amendment to deal with facilities on Route 10.
You guys have questions?
I have a question. What is sort of the timeline in which this has to be addressed before it becomes an issue for this, this entity that wants to come in?
I don't think I can say with a hundred percent surety, but I think, you know, I think given all the things that are happening with COVID-19, I think that's the challenge, maybe that you might be considering or not, but I think anything that the city can do to move this along faster than, faster than not would be helpful, because I think that the applicants would probably want to have some understanding that this is either in process or potentially underway. I don't know if you had a question related to, like, the timeline, that if there's a process question?
Yeah, there is a process question, sort of, and it's, um, it's only, I haven't really wanted to rock the boat on this, but we have a Rule 5C in our city council rules, and I worry that sometimes the way that some of this cannabis zoning-related stuff gets introduced to this committee might be sort of violating the spirit of Rule 5C, which is to say that when we, when we add new things to our business without going through the process of putting on an agenda and introducing it to committee, there's not necessarily an opportunity for folks in the public who are checking our agendas, but maybe not checking the committee agendas, to know what is, what's happening. It's a concern, it's not, it's not a concern I just have with this committee, but it's something that last term, I saw a lot of those committees starting up, like, introducing sort of very broad agenda items that allow them to sort of discuss in a more free-form way things, like introduce new ideas in committee. And while I am sympathetic to all of this, like, to the situation going on here, and I want to help, I do have a little bit of a concern about just the process.
Well, I can, I can speak to that, I guess, so when we put this on the agenda, we basically suspended that rule for this particular topic, because as the, this unfolded, we knew that we'd have to be responsive potentially in a shorter timeframe, and in addition to that, this, you know, because it's zoning, it has to go through such a extended process anyway, because remember, from here, we have to get, send it to the planning board, have to have a joint public hearing with the planning board, and then we would have to come back to the full council once again. So, you know, there's, I hear what you're saying, but I think that as we move forward, this, this particular one is gonna see a lot of light a day. It's not, you know, I don't think, it's, you know, people are gonna be concerned that we're trying to sneak something through necessarily, and if, you know, I mean, if you felt more comfortable, I don't see why we couldn't just submit it again, I mean, to the council, but I, you know, that's just one step, so, Owen.
Um, I hear what Tom's saying, and, I mean, this is, oops, this is a point of frustration to me also, but I think there is a compromise that kind of goes to what you were just saying, where we just, we report out some of these amendments, or basically like recommendations at council before moving forward, or we submit it as an agenda item, just for the sake of transparency, I don't know if that would
That's all I want, is just for an agenda item.
Because I totally agree with you, Tom, I know what you're saying, it's very open-ended, and if we're making broad changes like, like this, it should be reflected somewhere in the public information, is that kind of what you're saying?
Right, I mean, so there's, there's two things, one of them is a little pedantic, but I think it's relevant, which is that I don't ever remember us, like, we did introduce this item, which might in effect, but I don't remember us ever formally voting to suspend that rule. So, you know, the rule supersedes whatever vote we took, unless we formally voted to suspend the rule, which I don't recall doing. But the second issue is just that, yes, since these things are highly visible, I think that the, the, the right process is to add it to the agenda, like
I think that's fine.
That's just my thought.
Jeff, and then Owen?
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I will be completely honest, I don't know what the rule, I don't know what Rule 5 says, or what you might have experienced in the past, I do, I, if it's, if it's kind of circling back through the next city council meeting with it, with it on the agenda, I don't see a problem with that, I mean, I think though, it could be important to look at Rule 5C as it, in, in determine if a zoning amendment might be treated a little bit differently, or at least what Salem was saying is that from, you know, if, if the ordinance subcommittee was agreeable to pursuing both amendments together, then, you know, what has to happen is it goes to the planning board and ordinance for a joint public hearing. But I think it's really important that, for that joint public hearing, there's a, there's a legal advertisement that gets published in the Gazette, which has to happen before the joint public hearing starts, and then if the joint public hearing results in a recommendation that it go to full city council, then another legal ad goes out with two weeks' notice for the city council vote in public hearing process, so I just wanted to articulate that, in a zoning amendment, after this committee reviews it and makes any recommendations, it still goes through two public hearing processes, which is probably more than what some of the other things that Rule 5C might treat. It's more extensive, perhaps, so.
Yeah, I mean, I'm familiar with how zoning amendments work, I'm just saying that, like, as the rules chair, I just have to point out that right now, as written, I think that there's a sort of difference, but I'm sorry, Owen, you were
No, that's okay, you know, the more I sit here and reflect on this, I'm actually going to agree with Tom. We're, we're in kind of a weird position, where because it is on our agenda, we can discuss it, but the formality of the actual item that we're discussing does need to be submitted, I mean, this is essentially an amendment to existing ordinance. And so, that does need to be introduced, I mean, it's no different than the equity discussion, so I do think that we could probably have a discussion and agree on some language, but it does need to be submitted to the council as actual language that goes to our committee, I think.
I think so, and I think so too, and I think what, what this does is, it does give us a little bit of flexibility to, to take a look at it, and then I think what we can do is, at the same time, if you guys agree to that, we could probably send it as a formal item to us, and we can send it to the planning board at the same time. So, that, that way we can, you know, save a little bit of time, if, if this is something that's time-sensitive.
And for what it's worth, we're actually going to be discussing amendments to Rule 5C on Wednesday. So, anyone has any thoughts about areas where it's inappropriately applied, this is the time to do it, we'll be having a discussion on Wednesday. I just, because it's so close to my mind, I just can't help but notice that the process, you know, unless we can go back and find somewhere in the minutes saying that we formally agreed to suspend Rule 5C for this particular purpose, and we could take that vote in the future, if that's what we decide, in a sense, I just want to make sure that we're not doing anything that's going politically sensitive topic, that's going to end up, you know, with us maybe running afoul of our own rules.
Right, I think that makes sense. You know, I think, I mean, as far as like, open, open meeting law, we're good. So, you know, I think that probably the best course of action is to submit this to, to the agenda and send it to the planning board, so we can get it moving. What do you guys think?
That makes sense to me.
Yeah, and, and it could even be like, just a, you know, like what we're doing now, which is like an introduction of a topic, saying, okay, we, we need to work on this, let's get it into agenda and send it to planning, so I mean, like, we don't even have to go deep into the discussion. Just knowing that it exists.
When you, when you, when you just, when you talk about the idea of sending it to the planning board, when, when you say that, do you mean to initiate the public hearing process, or do you just mean as information to the planning board?
So, I think generally, the way we do it is just to get it onto their agenda, and then we can start the public hearing process.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, I'm very open to that, and
Okay. That sounds agreeable, Jeff?
Yeah.
All right, so what, so what, Owen?
Also, then the other thing I'll just say generally is, I don't have any issue with this, I think that, as with many things around this industry, we create all these kind of laws that make us feel good about it, but, you know, I don't have an issue with building new buildings for the sake of any industry, you know, cannabis or otherwise, and so I don't understand why, going back, why we didn't, why we did this in the first place, you know, this willing to increase our tax base, we're obviously aware of, you know, potentially the, although it's not retail, so I don't think that we're talking about tax revenue, but there's certainly property tax revenue, but generally, if someone wants to bring a business, cannabis or otherwise, East Hampton, I don't have a problem with them building, a building in order to contain that business, and then making all sorts of other restrictive provisions around how the building can be seen, which on the outside would just be a regular building Which on the outside would just be so regular building, whether they're cultivating cannabis in there or doing something else, I really don't care. So I'm, I'm completely supportive of this concept.
Okay, so, uh, Tom.
Yeah, and just to echo that, I mean, I feel that whatever zoning we have for sort of the appropriate use of any other. Sort of industrial building, whether it's a precision manufacturing shop or a brewery or whatever, like should probably also be able to handle. I don't, I, I don't personally see why this particular square building should be necessarily singled out. So I'm sympathetic to the idea here and, and happy to uh, you know, review it and participate and move it along.
Perfect. And so um what I'll do is I'll send this to Barbara uh to get on our agenda uh formally. And, and at the same time, I'll send, Jeff, I'll, I'll have, uh, just send you a letter saying that we're going to do this and get it, see if we can get on the planning board's agenda.
Yeah, that sounds good. And I do, if I, if not to belabor it, I have one more question that relates to this. So I heard um very clearly what Owen said and understand that and, and Tom too. You know, there may be the need to discuss some kind of parameters. If you think in terms of size of building, um it could be, it could come up. And I think it came up during the initial discussions two years ago as something that we weren't really ready to deal with and, and, and understand. So again, this kind of fell as a safeguard, but it's, I think it's really important that um a couple of years ago. In, it was more than a couple, but it was in two thousand fifteen, there was a zoning amendment um that capped the size of retail stores. In the highway business and, you know, it was kind of like the big box conversation. Um, and I, I think it's important because it was, it was determined and there's some language in the zoning that determined that. At fifty thousand square feet, a single building, you know, could be too big. Or potentially out of character with the size of other buildings. And so I think if, what, what I, what I expect to happen is that there will be some discussion of some kind of. Size limit on a building and what, what I was wondering about is if we potentially use that as the benchmark. To, 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 to connect to highway business in terms of just a, another large building. Whether we would want to include that section in the zoning, in this amendment. Or I guess as I'm talking, you know, if we were amending section ten point ten four point two. And we decided to put reference to that size building here, then I guess we're all within that amendment. I'm just trying to figure out if we're actually looking at amending another section or not. But I think it, go ahead. Yeah, I wasn't here for that, but I, I remember, I remember reading about it in the paper. But it, it becomes relevant because it applies to um in the, in the zoning ordinance. It's everything under retail and services, but as of right now cannabis cultivation falls in a different category. But I know that the, the planning board in the joint public hearing that was held two years ago did mention, you know, the, the, the concern of. What, what may have been happening in Charlton where without it, we could be susceptible to like. A really large single building and that, at least that fifty thousand, fifty thousand foot cap is, is somewhere in our existing ordinance.
Right. I mean, like, I guess the thing is, my problem with a million square foot cannabis cultivation facility. If I had a problem with it would be the same problem I would have with a million dollar or a million square foot. You know. Air, like a, like a aviation component manufacturing facility. You know, like they've got some huge factories down in like Westfield and whatnot. Creating like aircraft parts, you know, it's a huge building. I could see there being conservation concerns. I could see there being runoff concerns. I could see there being character of the neighborhood concerns. I just don't think, and, and if it turns out that we think that our zoning is insufficient. To deal with those sorts of things, then maybe we need to put something in, but I just don't think that it, that it's exclusively related to cannabis.
Owen.
Uh, this question is probably more for you Salem. So.
Yeah.
You were there obviously when they put in this, that zoning regulation that Jeff's referring to. So I mean, it sounds to me like that language more dealt with retail and again to avoid big box, so like a Walmart or something like that. So.
What it was.
Uh, so if it's, if we're, if, I mean, the fact that like this building we're talking about. Potentially wouldn't, like a giant cultivation facility isn't retail. And I guess the other question then too is if it's special permit, wouldn't the planning board be able to make recommendations also? So even if, even i- if, if, even if uh like a large cultivation building fell. What didn't fall under the guidelines of the fifty thousand foot cap, couldn't the planning board discuss that?
Well, certainly they could discuss it, but whether, so if you, if they came in with a million square foot facility and it was undesirable. Your chances of denying it based on, based on that are low. Cause you, cause you don't have anything in your zoning that says like size limit. So I just, I, I don't mean to belabor the point now. I just, I do think it'll come up. Because that was what was happening when we, two years ago, when we were coming through, you know, this process was, there was, there was. And it's not that far away, but that discussion was happening and it was really out of character with the location that they had chosen in Charlton. And so we didn't have necessarily enough time to even really figure it out. So, so the safeguard was if it's an existing building and it'll be, it'll be okay. Uh, cause we kind of had a sense of all of our existing buildings, but now, now we're ready to look at cultivation as a new use in a new building. And I just, I just think that it could come up. Um, but as, as we've talked, I mean, I think. In terms of a joint hearing with ordinance and the planning board, I think you could insert whatever might be necessary or desirable. You can insert it right into this section. So.
Right.
I mean, it's not to project that it has to happen, but it could if it, if it seems necessary.
Okay. All right. So, so uh I'm gonna, I'm gonna send this over to Peggy and Barbara today. And see if we can get it in on the agenda as, as an amendment for Wednesday. Okay, that way we can get running on it. Owen.
Jeff, do you, out, out of these three options, is there one that you prefer?
Um, it's, I mean, it's not necessarily a preference, but I, I went back and, and in this um document that Salem has up. I went back to the, the hearing that it was most discussed as a reference point and, and it was size. Um, that came up, you know, um, the chair of the planning board was concerned with, you know, the potential for large buildings. Without design standards. So it was really kind of size and potentially design. So I, I do think it could come up a- as just making sure we have some outer limit. On what we might want to see in the highway business because it's not in, it's not the industrial zone. So, so like, you know, in our, on, on like O'Neil Street, you know, is our industrial zone. You know, and there's some pretty large buildings on O'Neil Street. And the question is whether we, whether, if one of those got created on, on route ten, whether it would still fit. So something like option three with some potential criteria might be useful. But that's really the, you know, that's what gets discussed at the public hearings.
Owen.
Do you think Jeff, that the issue is footprint more than um overall size? In other words, if you built like a two story building that occupied a hundred thousand square feet. But the, obviously its footprint is only one of a fifty thousand square foot building. You know, with something like that where you could only have certain, you couldn't exceed certain dimensions, would that be, do you think favorable?
Um, yeah, I was just trying to look really quick at the zoning, you know, yeah, cause there are. There's probably an existing height requirement, like height limit in the highway business. So, you know, that's, that's really the only parameters we would have is the height of a building. And then a- as JP's um amendment, you know, reflects setbacks. So those are the two things that we currently have. We don't really have anything else other than size, except when you look at the retail. The, that retail section was where it was determined that fifty thousand square feet of anything retail was too big. Um, so I just expected to come up.
Great. Well, I think, I appreciate you coming in Jeff for that. Um, and uh, I'll, I'll send this over to the president. And to Barbara as soon as we're done with this meeting.
Okay, and does it, does it, does it include, will it include councillor Kuzinski's amendment too? I mean, is, is in terms of a package that you send out, back out?
Yeah, I, I think what I, what I can do is I can um get, take what you sent these three options. And just say this is something that we need to look at in addition to the um setbacks.
Okay.
Yeah. But we already have, um, so we already have the setbacks on our agenda, so this would be new to our agenda.
Yeah.
But sending them both over to, to planning.
Okay, that sounds good. Thank, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff. Thanks for joining us.
Okay, I am gonna leave though. All right, thank you very much. Okay.
Tony, take care. Um, okay. Oh, here we go, red tape crisis. Uh, all right, thanks guys and I appreciate you uh allowing that, you know, um. Just to discuss that, I thought it was, I, because the way Jeff talked about it, it felt like it was time sensitive. So I just wanted to make sure that we got to it. Um, and Tom, I, I hear your, I, I, your concerns. And I think if we send it in, that we should be pretty good.
Yeah, I think so too.
Okay. Um, all right, do you want to go back to plastic?
Sure.
All right, let's see if I can pull that back up. All right. So do we want to talk about Dan's suggestions here? Real quick, or do you want to go through the other pieces, Owen?
Well, do you want me, I mean, do you want me to just tell you quickly the thing, the, the things that we changed?
Sure.
Um, so I know that we went back, if I kept it in for now, I know we went back. So generally anywhere where the word biodegradable appeared, I um, I just changed it to compostable based on the last. Discussion. I kept the word biodegradable and though, just because if that word was used. We'd have a reference point for it. I don't know if that makes sense.
It's, well, it does. I mean, wasn't it, I felt like biodegradable was used on one of the ASTM standards or something.
It might be. So I think that, so I left that in there. Um, I added in that suggested five thousand square foot. What's it, cut, cutoff uh for retail establishments in regards to the bag charge like we discussed.
If they're under five thousand, then they are.
Correct.
And do you know where that is?
That would be section three point one point two, right there.
Oh, there it is. Yep.
Um, I also, oh, I, I included, I'm, I included a definition for produce bag. Which basically is like, you know, like if you're bagging loose items like um, you know, produce and. You know, things like that. And I, where did I put that? Oh, that's section three point one point one, basically. And that goes to a little bit to what Dan was saying, councillor Rist was saying about. You know, meats and stuff like that, but.
Sure.
Um, we could talk about those exemptions. I. I, I put in all the exemption, I removed all the exemptions that we talked about. So the um, I'd have to look at the original one, but it was um. This is the revised one, sorry. So things like newspapers, which I thought was a great point, dry cleaning. I think we generally agreed that if people want exemptions, they could ask for them.
Yep.
Um, so we removed a lot of that. We removed the, the, there was something about hospitals or nursing homes and use. There wasn't, there aren't any in the, in East Hampton currently.
Sure.
Um, and I think, could you scroll down just a little bit there Salem?
And their exemptions?
Yeah, that's perfect. Um, let's see, what else? Think those are the two are moved. I removed, as we discussed, the, um. There was like a cap to how many times you could request an exemption. And I think you and Tom made a really good point that if, you know, it's not like that need for that exemption. Like if there's certain things that just don't exist, you know, having a cap doesn't make any sense. Like if you have a special top to your containers that just doesn't exist in a compostable form. Like, you know, what happens after two years? So I took that out and I think that was it. I mean, there might have been a few smaller things, but that was.
And I also, I think like one of Dan's questions was about the um flexible transparent covering. And I, I, you know, honestly, after I thought about that and looked at this again, I don't think, at least I've never heard of a biodegradable. Or compostable um Saran Wrap. Um, I mean, it might exist, but I, I think it probably would be price prohibitive um potentially. So I think that's one of the reasons why that's exempted there.
Correct. I mean, like a, a, a lot of these ordinances I, I um, I reviewed and researched and in talking to some of these. You know, um, environmental organizations, they generally will allow for that just because of what you said, that it just, it doesn't exist. And it's, it's really creates a hardship trying to, you know, ask, like again, the, the expectation is people will do their best to find alternatives. But if they, if they can't find it, it's just an automatic exemption. Like every, every time someone wants to use plastic wrap, they don't have to apply for exemption.
Right, right.
A one tiny formatting thing, there should be a space between four point one and any.
Oh, yes. I, thank you. I will, thanks Tom.
I will. And, and Barbara, Barbara usually does go through and.
All right, so. Cool.
Yeah, she's great. Uh, now, do, do you want to um talk about the fines? Cause I, I mean, I think Dan did have a point, like.
Yeah, I don't have an issue with what he said. I mean, you know, I certainly think it could go up. I mean, maybe fifty, a hundred and then, I don't know, more.
Um, yeah. I, I mean, I, I think, you know, people might just be like, oh, this fine is like, it'd be cheaper to pay the fine.
Right. Yeah, I mean, that's the one thing that I think you need to consider is that if, if people like, if they're buying in bulk. And they're only going to get caught periodically.
Right.
To say that it makes more sense to just pay the fine. Comply, but I also, you also don't want to be too insane about it.
Right.
What's that?
Maybe, do you think five hundred dollars for like a third offense or?
Maybe, or two fifty.
He was saying like the triple them's like a hundred fifty for the first and three hundred after that. That's just what Dan said.
Yeah, or maybe a hundred for the first and two hundred for the second and then it just, two hundred every time.
That seems like a place to start and if.
Yeah.
We get the sense that, that people aren't responding to it from the Board of Health, we can always.
Go up.
Later.
Yeah, and I would defer to the full council too, if this, you know, gets to a public hearing. I mean, if people want to weigh in at that point, offer, you know, reasons to have them even higher, especially councillor Rist. Cause he seems to, you know, feel strongly about this and, you know, I'm not tied to these numbers at all.
So let's, let's just, let's bump it up to a hundred and two hundred.
Okay.
And go from there. Does that sound fair?
Yeah, I'm good, I'm good with that.
And then we have our hardship, hardship deferments.
And there's another, there's a formatting error there too, but I can fix that.
Now, do you, do you want to do and do you want to take Dan's advice and go to eighteen months instead of a year or? I guess it kind of depends.
I mean. You know, by the time we, by the time we get to, actually get to this.
Right.
I don't know. Uh.
I'm, I'm kind of either way, honestly, like.
Yeah, I am too. I mean, I.
I feel like a year is plenty of time.
Yeah, I mean, the reality of when this actually, when do you think this would even go to a public? I mean, this is, uh, I, I could go either way. I'm not, whatever works. I mean, I don't, I agree with Dan that our business community is just the last thing they probably want to deal with at this point is signing compostable containers.
Yeah, especially right now where they have to buy like um, non, you know, like. Nobody can use the reusable bags right now, so.
Right. I guess the spirit of that, I don't, I don't personally have any problem with the idea of extending it.
I mean, you could put a pin in that, right Salem? I mean, by the time we actually get to this, I mean, when do you think? I mean, is this one of those public hearings where we probably should wait till we could actually have people there or?
Uh, I know, I'll, I'll kind of, since you brought this forward, I'll, I'll defer to you. I mean, I think we could. I'll defer to you. I mean, I think we could bring it forward. But we're definitely not going to have the public input that we would if we had a real meeting. You know, so if you wanted to wait till the summer, I think that's fine.
Yeah.
You know, if we want to, if we want to try to move it sooner, that's fine too. It's just we're not going to get as much. Input.
I would be.
Regardless of, sorry.
Oh no, go ahead.
I guess the regardless of when it goes forward, whenever we actually bring it to a vote, we'll probably have a better idea then of what the world looks like than we do right now. And so if at that point. We decide that we wanted to extend it to eighteen months or whatever, we could do it at that point.
Yeah, I agree with that. Um, what, what's, no, it's, it's April.
April.
I mean, and we have to, we still have to vote on the budget. I mean, the reality is that. We're probably looking not until June for this anyways, right?
Right.
I, I agree with Tom. I mean, we could just leave a year in there and we could make an amendment on the spot if it looks like. You know. That needs to be, would, does that sound reasonable?
Yeah, that's fine.
Really reasonable. And, uh, I think, you know, the, one of the other pieces that probably should happen before. And, and you might have already had this discussion, but just making sure that the Board of Health. I mean, they're pretty, like, I imagine Bree is pretty taxed at this point. Like to, to see if this is still like reasonable within. Her purview and scope. I know that she dealt with it in Greenfield, but we, I, I don't know if we need to check in with her again once kind of this whole thing is over.
Yeah, I'll touch base with her, uh, leading up to this. I think it was just when the COVID crisis was coming up and there's some other things happening and. She was pretty open to the, she was very open to the idea, I'll say. I would, I would, I don't think I'd be misrepresenting. What she said by saying that she welcomed this concept. But yeah, totally. I will, I'll, I'll, I'll talk to her and see if she could take a peek at it. You know, and. In the meantime, you know, if she could find, I'll, I'll, I'll chat with her about that.
Yep, and I think, um. You know. I feel like the ordinance, the ordinance isn't a relatively good place right now, so. You know, I mean, if we did decide if, if things calm down, I mean, we could always. Look at trying to get it in, uh, end of May or, or if things are, if things are calm. But, uh, because I, I think, I mean, this is something I think that is pretty ready to go. You know.
Yeah, I mean, my priorities obviously have shifted a little bit as it has the rest of the world, so the concept of Earth Day. You know, is, that's gone out the window a little bit, so I think that I'm glad that we're even just still discussing this and it's viable. So I'm good with whatever. I think, you know. Looking at everything that's going on in terms of being sensitive to all the other issues and needs of the city, yeah, I agree, like end of May or June, if you guys are, are fine with that.
Yeah, I think that's probably where we're going to be at. So, alright, uh, and, and, uh, so Owen, if you wouldn't mind. Just changing those, those fines.
Yeah, absolutely.
Then, then we can, um. Resend it to Dan. And, and maybe just let everybody take a look at it maybe even. Just to, since we have the time, get eyes on it and.
Yeah.
What do you think about that?
Yeah, do you, do you want me to just type it up and put it in the next packet? Would that help?
Yeah, I, I think that would be, and we can just say that here, here we are, this is an update, we're going to wait until. Things kind of calm down a little bit so we can have people. Give input.
Sure. So the biggest thing is the fines really, right? And then I could maybe attach a little note that. We discussed when this would go into effect, but. Agreed that, um, or I guess when you reported out that, uh. Okay.
Perfect. Alright, let me just see, um. Oh, um. As far as JP's amendment. Do you guys have a problem with us kind of, uh, taking that up in conjunction with this new topic as we go forward? And taking a look, taking a look at like basically in highway business, what does it look like to have, uh, you know, a. A new cannabis business that isn't retail in, on highway business in a residential area? What are the size restrictions? Uh, what are the setbacks? Like just folding it into that?
I don't have a problem with that. I just, have you gotten any information from him about any basis for this?
I have not heard anything from him.
Okay.
My one thing is that, I mean, it kind of depends. So long as the, uh, the stuff that Jeff brought to us today is confined to the highway business, I don't have a problem with that. If one of them's. You know, if, if, if he starts wanting to talk about. Something in a broader area and, or if, I, I forget, is JP's thing confined to the highway business?
Just highway business.
If they're both totally to the highway business, then I don't mind sort of considering them as one item.
Okay, okay.
My, my only concern is that in, in regards to the nature of that amendment is that. There's lots of other industries, this is all about odor supposedly. There's lots of other industries like, uh, building supplies or, um, gardening supplies or. Various manufacturing or even like if you own a large, like there's the, um, I don't know if that's technically highway business, but there's, um. A landscaping company with lots of trucks down in the, um, in the industrial park, so. There's lots of other businesses in the city that potentially have offensive odors and the. The premise of this amendment is that specifically the odor of cannabis is. Is, is hierarchically way more offensive than any other potential odor that could be created from a single industry and so. I think that if we're going to talk about setbacks for this. Then for specifically for cannabis business, then we have to talk about for everything then and that.
I would agree with that.
Um, and I also think that in specifically in this industry, at least the research I've done is that. Setbacks are not a real form of mitigating odors coming from cannabis establishments. It's, it's filtration and that. We already have that in our ordinance that, you know, if there's, if there's complaints of odor that. The, it, the, um, the business needs to look at the filtration system. Um, and we, so we have things in place for that already. If you think it smells too bad, you go to the business and there's a complaint-driven process that they have to fix that, so. I don't really even get the. The, I hold, I don't get the idea behind this in general.
Right. Yeah, I mean, I, I agree with you and I think, you know, one of the things as we look at this, we should, we really need to consider is. You know, equity in zoning, um, you know, and, and looking at, if you can, if you can have a manure pile in your business. Like, how is that less offensive than someone who has a potential odor of cannabis, right? And, and so looking at setbacks in general, um, I think. Uh, I'm fine with, uh, and, and I think that, I think you're right. I think this one is. Driven specifically because that. You know, someone interprets the odor of cannabis to be worse than other odors. Um, I mean, I, I know we have businesses in East Hampton that, for example. Um, if you're riding down the bike path on a certain day, you can smell the factory that's on the side of the bike path making some sort of rubber. You know, and you smell like a smell of chemicals and, you know, how is that less offensive? Than other odors. Uh, so I, I think this does give us an opportunity to, to take a look at this and, and through the lens of. You know, equity and, uh. Um, making sure that we're not being, building this kind of discrimination into the zoning. Uh, so I appreciate that you brought that up.
Yeah, totally. That's the thing that's kind of, I've gone hung up on with this the whole time.
And, and, I mean, and this, and I think that this is going to be part of, I, I think this should be an important part of this discussion as we look at that piece of it. So, uh, yeah, I, I think that we can kind of move forward with that on our, on our plate and. And look at it through that lens. Um, alright, uh, do you guys have anything else?
I don't think so.
No, not, no.
Alright, well, let's, uh. Uh, so just so for you guys to know, I'm gonna, I'm gonna do an emergency send. To Barbara tonight and to, to Peggy and see if I can get this on just so it doesn't, so, because we did talk about it and just to like. Keep it, uh, on the level. And make sure we get it in as soon as possible, so. Any other discussions we have on it, uh, people will be aware that that's specifically what we're talking about. Does that sound good?
Sounds great.
Awesome. Alright, well, can I, uh, oh, do you have something Owen?
Well, when do you want to meet again or do you have, or?
Um, do you wanna? Let's do. So we're on the ninth now, how about the twenty-third? You guys want to keep it on Thursday?
Sure.
Sounds good to me. Same time?
Same time, five thirty on the twenty-third?
I can do that.
Perfect. Alright, I'll, I'll put that in.
Cool.
Awesome. Alright, uh, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.